Chloe, let me ask you, I guess the only ones, I know Ms. Lempus has said in here, are Mr. Flue. Anyone else?
Um, Angie's having computer, yeah, Ms. Johnson is having computer trouble, but is trying to log in still.
So we got one, two, three, four, so we got a quorum now with five, I guess, correct? Yeah, we got me, Mr. Bailey, Ms. Harrison, Ms. Jacobs, and Mr. LaSane, correct?
Correct.
Krista, we ought to be okay to get started with the forum, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. This November eighteenth, a member of the, a meeting of the Planning Commission, the City of Charleston will come to order. My name is Charlie Carish, I'm the chairman of the commission. I'm joined today by Mr. Jimmy Bailey, there's Erica Harrison, there's Donna Jacobs, Mr. Harry LaSane, myself, and I think Ms. Johnson will be with us in a minute, she's having some computer issues. We, the commission members are appointed by city council, they're volunteers, and I know everyone joins me in appreciating their time and their efforts on behalf of the City of Charleston. The way we operate is, I'll read an item into the agenda, and then the staff will go through the item, make a recommendation, then we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll hear from anyone in support of the application, anyone opposed to the application, then we'll give the applicant a chance to answer any questions or about anything that was said, then we'll close the public aspect of this, excuse me. Before we do that, we'll read any, we'll hear from anyone that's signed up to speak, and we'll also read any written comments into the record so that everyone is heard. At that time, we'll close the public hearing aspect, and commission members will discuss and vote on any item. Mr. Morgan, I think, I'll ask you to introduce, I'll read number one into the agenda. Before that, I'll let you introduce anyone on your staff that are presenting today, and let me know if there's any changes to the agenda.
Okay, so I'm Christopher Morgan, I'm planning manager here at the City of Charleston. Also assisting with the presentation today will be Anna Hart, our senior zoning planner. Chloe Stubber is making the whole meeting run, she's a planner. Marcy Grant is our clerk, and also listening in and available for information is Lee Batchelder, our zoning administrator, and Philip Overcash, our senior planner, is helping with technical issues. We do have a deferral, it's kind of a late-breaking deferral, it just happened this afternoon, but that is 515 Island Park Drive on Daniel Island. That rezoning is deferred until next month.
Great, thank you, Mr. Morgan. We don't have a lot on the agenda, but I know we have some items that are going to take some time and a lot of comments, so that's important. So with number one, rezoning, 515 Island Park Drive being deferred, we'll go to ordinance amendment and rezoning, number one. Henry Teklenburg and Savage Road, Essex Farms Village, PUD, West Ashley, TMS number 309, 000262, and 002. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I hope you all can see the screen here, I hope you can see my cursor. But this is behind the St. Francis Hospital in West Ashley, behind the Glen McConnell Parkway. It's at the corner of Henry Teklenburg Drive and Savage Road. At present, across the street here, I'm going to move something around on my screen, we have Dominion already has a small facility and substation in this location here, and I guess you'd call it the southwest corner of Ashley Town Center Drive and Savage Road. And they are interested in building a better and larger facility across the way for their crews that come in to put up power poles and respond in storms. It's also a staging site for storm recovery, and then there would also be an engineering office. And we'll show you some more slides here, so you can understand what's in the PUD a little bit better. But just to understand what is near here, we've got Physicians' Drive across the street that has a number of medical offices on it. We have other medical offices that have been built on Henry Teklenburg Drive. There's an assisted living facility here, there's a dialysis center proposed here, so a lot of medical-related things. But there is also some residential, a PUD amendment to the Essex Farms PUD was made a few years ago and led to some townhouses being built a little bit further up the road. So there is a good bit of mix in this PUD. And then, near this site, we of course have the existing Dominion site, and then some other commercial zonings further down Ashley Town Center Drive, which heads to the Costco in this direction. To the south is a very large apartment complex, you can see the large apartment buildings here, I believe it's called Castlewood, and it backs up to multiple sites here. And then, of course, the St. Francis site is further up in this location. I'm going to go through a few slides of the PUD now. So we have, first off, our Century Five plan, we always look at the plan when we're coming up with our, what our recommendation would be for particular use. This is still in our Job Center area, which was designated all around St. Francis Hospital. This is the Job Center, this is Teklenburg Drive. And so it's an area that we were trying to be very protective of generating new jobs in the West Ashley area and making sure that new development helped create jobs in that area. Next slide is, this is the existing property that is subject to this rezoning or PUD amendment. It has a overhead power line running through in this location, and then it's a wooded tract here and at the very corner. And here's the existing Dominion facility here, and you see some of the nearby, this is the assisted living, this is the medical offices, and more medical offices here. And here is the PUD amendment area on the plat. Here is the concept for what would go in the place. First off, you'd have a 16,000 square foot office fronting on the Henry Teklenburg Drive here. And this would be, you know, an office building similar to the other office buildings that are in this area. It would go through our design review board process. It would have a parking area that would be well buffered by existing trees and new birmingham here. And then there would be this truck staging and lay-down yard area back to the rear. This would be surrounded with a solid fence. It would also have the birmingham that would continue along the Henry Teklenburg Drive and other extensive trees. And then there would be a trail system along the front that is a continuation of a trail system that's already underway along Teklenburg Drive here. There is an existing Charleston Water System easement that runs roughly in this location here. So this area is already cleared, and they would utilize this area for a joint access location. Charleston Waters access easement would then head off in this direction to some facilities they have further behind here. And the Dominion facility would have access here through a security gate here. It does back up to the apartments, the apartments have some degree of fencing on their own side, and then, of course, there would be solid fencing, screening all of these facilities that Dominion would be building in this location. And again, everything about this site would go to our design review board, which is a public process, and they look not only at the architecture of the buildings, but at screening. They also look at lighting, which of course would have to be cast just upon the facilities that Dominion has, and not something that would spill over to surrounding properties. This is some information about the purpose and intent of this amendment. And it talks about amending for this parcel to essentially allow this light industrial type use that they would have on the facility. And then they have a number of use and district regulations. It would allow for the utility agency operations office, which would have engineering offices, things like that, and then equipment, lay-down yard, and truck parking, no other LI uses would be permitted. All accessory structures would be setback from Henry Teklenburg Drive for 75 feet. All parking would be screened, maintaining existing protected trees. And there would be berms or fence or wall with a minimum height of eight feet that blends with the landscape. The driveway would be shared with Charleston Waters, I already mentioned. There would be an eight-foot opaque fence or wall between the CWS access drive and the utility yard. All lights would be oriented to the utility yard, not spill over south of the parcel. There would be a structure constructed at the corner of Henry Teklenburg Drive and Savage Road at the open end of Essex Farm, at the end of the Essex Farms open space multi-use path, which could have seating for a bus stop or interpretive signage, benches, bike racks, garden, or landscape plantings. And then there will be a DRB-approved fence and plantings around the perimeter of the existing facility. So that's actually off the site that is subject to this PUD. And then the drive surface material, the traffic areas of the truck lay-down area must be dust-free. Scroll down through this, so we are recommendation, recommending for approval on this, but we do have a number of conditions we would like to suggest as part of your review here. And first off, it would be that the future site must meet the vision client clearance requirements to stay in the zoning ordinance. This would be reviewed during the site plans submittal. We feel the site must meet the site distance visibility requirement outlined in SC DOT arms manual. And the two access drives, truck access locations shown closest to the intersection of Teklenburg Drive as part of the conceptual plan will be limited to write-in, write-out. As part of the site plan approval, SC DOT permit will be required. As part of a future site plan review, transit improvements may be required as part of the project per city ordinance. Please review the ordinance and requirements. And then, as part of the future site plan improvements, the right-of-way pavement markings may be required. Crosswalks, center lines, pavement marking, bike and pedestrian markings may be replaced. And then, we would also like to see the site plan remove all references to use of chain link fence, so as not to conflict with the existing language, the utility shall provide a DRB-approved fence and plantings around the perimeter of the existing facility at the southeast corner of Ashley Town Center Drive and Savage Road. So with these conditions, staff is recommending for approval, and that is what we have to present to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, is Mr. Forsberg here? Is the applicant or anyone else applicant from the application?
Yes, let me go ahead and promote them to panelists. Okay. All of the team members should now have access to their videos and microphones, if you can please share your video, if you have that capability, and...
If, if, if you would, also just identify yourself, if you would, as we go on, thank you.
Good evening, I'm, I'm Trey Linton with Forsberg Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Linton, you go ahead or introduce anyone else that would be presenting.
Thank you, I've, there's a number of people from Dominion Energy on the, on the, on as well, but I'll go ahead and get started. I'm, I'm a civil engineer with Forsberg Engineering, representing Dominion Energy on the project. I think it's important to note that Dominion already has a presence in the area, and they have a need to expand to better serve the community. It seems best for them to, to expand adjacent to their current property. And as Christopher alluded to, we, we've worked with city staff and city leaders in an effort to make sure that this is a quality project, and that they remain in a central location, and that's important to Dominion to remain in a central location. And then lastly, I'd like to go back to the conditions that Chris touched on. Yes, the amended use will be LI, light industrial. But under condition A, we stated loud uses, utility agency operations office, equipment, lay-down yard, and truck parking only. No other uses under LI permitted. Just like to reiterate that, because I feel it's important, and we appreciate your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Linton, is anyone else? Again, we don't need to hear from anyone else, but if anyone else would like to speak from your team, that's fine, if not, we'll move on. So, um, is anyone, we've heard from the applicant, is, do we have any comments for anyone to speak? Chloe, in favor of the application, if not, anyone in opposition to the application?
No, and no written comments submitted either.
Okay, so no of either, so, uh, Mr. Linton, we'll go ahead unless there's nothing else that you want to say. We'll go ahead and close the public aspect of this, and I'd ask commission members to either ask questions or comments or make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jacobs?
Yes, I, I would like to applaud them for all of their consideration of buffering and everything around their property and their submittal. However, I would like to ask one question. I noticed that there was a lot of attention around three sides of the property for buffering and birmingham and landscaping, but not the side of the property that's closest to the residential section. And I was just wondering why that might not have been considered, because that might be the highest impact of any noise or movement or lighting, if they would, could address that.
Mr. Linton, can you help us with that?
Yes, there's, the area that's adjacent to the residential property is a CWS easement, and it's an access easement for CWS, so it has to remain that way. And, and we are planning on sharing an access with CWS, and we still have to maintain that access for them. The, the site will also have additional screening added to that side as well.
Okay, so there's no opportunity there for, I know in our previous meeting, we approved like a buffer wall between a highway and some property with some landscaping, so there's no room for any of that on the property because of this easement?
There may be some opportunity between the easement and our side, but I don't know the specifics on the CW easement and, and how that relates to our property at this time.
Okay, and I just, just for the record, I know the original PUD was dated 1987, revised in 2003 and 2008, and they make reference to a stormwater manual for all your stormwater management. That is the most current stormwater manual that we're working under, is I correct?
We will be, we will conform to the newest stormwater manual that was adopted in July of 2020.
Good, thank you. I'm not going to necessarily, I'll make a motion for approval. I won't make it a condition, but when you come before DRB, I would like to see that y'all give some consideration to some buffering between that neighborhood, because that, that could be impactful, anything that y'all can do with that would be great, greatly appreciated, but I will move for approval.
But, but, Ms. Jacobs, you'll move approval with the conditions?
Conditions that the staff recommended, and, and I won't add what I, my question as a recommendation, except to strongly suggest that they consider that, thank you.
And I think that's a good recommendation, I'm, Mr. Linton hopefully hears you and will do that as well, to try to work, make sure we're as pedestrian-friendly as possible. Any other comments, questions, or second to the motion by commission members?
Mr. LaSane has his hand raised.
Mr. LaSane, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Carish, I would like to say the motion and just reiterate her addition to the conditions, I guess, where it's not necessarily, she didn't move for a condition, but a plea to buffer that, the rear of the property from the, from the, from the apartments, so...
Thank you, Mr. LaSane, you second the motion. Thank you, I appreciate your second, any other comments or questions from commission members? If not, and I think you all are both correct, and we appreciate, Mr. Linton, I know he hears us, that we want to make this as the area. Sometimes the power companies get a bad rap, sometimes when they do developments of things, so we appreciate anything y'all can do to make this as friendly as possible, so thank you. If not, we'll call, I'll read the roll call vote on this motion. Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson, I think you're with us, aren't you?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry, I'm having technical difficulties, so you're half on my phone and half on my screen, but aye, I'm in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. LaSane?
Aye, in favor.
Right, and I'm in favor, so that's six in favor and none opposed, so that passes. The next item on the agenda is ordinance amendment, number one, amend chapter 54 of the code of the City of Charleston zoning ordinance by changing part 16, cluster development of article two, land use regulations stat, a new section 54 dash 299.16, fragment cluster developments will no longer be permitted for new developments. Mr. Morgan? Mr. Morgan, will you be presenting on this, or?
Yeah, I think Mr. Batchelder is on the call. Give him an opportunity, if he wants to say anything about this, otherwise I'll, I'll go forward with it, Mr. Batchelder.
You're the one.
I, I will chime in if need be, but I would, I'll let you go ahead and present this.
Okay, all right, so this was initiated by city council. As in interest, I guess there have been a lot of concerns from different residents in the community about how the existing cluster ordinance functions. And so the determination was made by council that they wanted to see if there could be a sunset of the existing cluster ordinance. And so essentially, that's what this ordinance amendment apply, allows for. Essentially, I, let me move this around on my screen, but it would not let you, after the first reading, the council has already given to this on October 13th, 2020, you could not have new cluster developments permitted. But if developments have already obtained a vested right for cluster development under this part before the sunset date, they could continue on, and future developments identified in a phased development plan is being developed as cluster development under this part. If one or more phases included in the phased development plan have obtained a vested right for cluster development under part, under this part before the sunset date. So there are several out there that have other phases such as described here. And so those would be able to continue, but otherwise there would not be new cluster developments in the city. And that is what the ordinance allows for, and that is the information we have to present to you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I guess the city's actually the applicant on this, so you're speaking, Lee, would you like to say anything? If not, we'll move forward with the public comments.
No, I think Christopher did a good job of summing it up, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Chloe, people sign up to speak, or?
Yes. Okay, first participant signed up to speak is Harriet Reviss. Harriet, your microphone should, you should be able to unmute now.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Reviss.
Okay, my name is Harriet Reviss, and I'm president of the Marlboro Neighborhood Association, and I am in support of this amendment to remove the cluster ordinance from the zoning code. As you may already know, members of city staff have been working on an ordinance to supersede the cluster ordinance, realizing that substantial changes need to be made. The lack of setbacks on lots is a particular concern of mine. Also clustering homes into a small area creates a larger footprint of impervious surfaces, something that goes against progressive thinking, which would allow for more pervious surfaces around homes to absorb water. During the committee meeting where this was discussed, Mr. Chip McQueeney with, I guess, City Legal stated that it would be a lot easier to remove the cluster ordinance rather than trying to supersede another ordinance on top of it. And this ordinance amendment passed its first reading at city council with a unanimous vote on October 13th, as was stated previously. I support removal of the cluster ordinance and then working with the Dutch Dialogues team to look at hydrology and topography before writing new ordinances, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reviss, Chloe, who's next?
Okay, next is Beadis Wade. Okay, when you're ready.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes, I too would like to say that I support the removal of this cluster ordinance, and it's for the same reasons that Harriet Reviss just mentioned. But the real concern is that, you know, the Dutch Dialogues will be really informative about making this cluster ordinance, you know, we can work on it and make it a better ordinance, and it is, so that's my, my feeling, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And you also would just say your name again and give us your address for the record?
Yes. Beadis Wade, 624 Flint Street, Laurel Park, Community, in, on James Island.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your help. Chloe, who's next?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, Councilmember Jackson, I see that you're on the line. Can you just indicate, raising your hand if you want to speak, or if you'd rather, raise your hand if you want to speak? Can you just indicate raising your hand if you want to speak or if you'd rather, raise your hand if you want to speak. If not, then we'll read your comment, the statement that you submitted. Okay. Then just the written comments.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry, for in favor. There's five written comments in favor. And then we have one person signed up to speak in opposition of this.
Why don't we go ahead and read the ones in favor now, if you would?
Christopher, are you reading or do you want me to read?
Either way.
I'm happy to.
Okay, why don't you read it, Chloe?
Okay. First is from Franny Henty. It's 615 Flint Street. The concern Charleston Realtor who's awake in the Realtor Ethics Class and writing in support of Carol Jackson's proposed removal of the Byright R1 Cluster Zoning. Charleston is recovering from urban sprawl and bridle development that has been installed on top of wetlands and broken drainage and sewer infrastructure. On top of this, there are no variances available from the Atlantic Ocean that continues to rise around us and some places we have sewer mixing with creek water and stormwater. If we are aware and we seek to sell our home, we must disclose the material adverse environmental defects manufactured in part by neglect and unbridled development. That is contrary to quality of life and marketability of your existing taxpayers' homes. City council isn't, wasn't supportive of this when I heard them out of meeting. And I understand that this went to Councilman Dudley Gregory's committee. By right, R1 Cluster Zoning is not a valuable tool for anyone but developers who stand to build, fill their pockets and skate. I eagerly await to hear the planning commissioners' comments and votes. The second is from Mary Ann Coley at Wamba Avenue. We have had so much flooding on Wamba Avenue that my flood insurance has gradually increased until it is almost 3,000 per year. That is in addition to my regular insurance of 2,500. The flooding is pricing me out of insurance and will eventually ensure that I can no longer sell my house at its appropriate value, if at all. Please protect those of us who would like to continue to reside safely in this area. For these reasons, I would like to request that the planning commission support the ordinance to remove the cluster ordinance, which gained unanimous consent on its first reading in city council on October 13th, 2020 and is now in effect. The cluster ordinance does not require specific lot sizes or any setbacks in homes or densely clustered, creating a higher density than surrounding SR1 neighborhoods. Third is from R. Elaine Parish, 502 E. East Wilmington Drive. I understand that there is to be a second and third reading regarding this. I would like to put in my opinion that cluster homes have no place in Charleston zoning code. There's no required setbacks. They are just too tightly packed and out of place in older neighborhoods. If you have any questions or concerned about this email, please feel to reach me. Thank you for your attention. Lauren Dibert, 520 East Wilmington Drive, submitted the same comment as the one I just read. And then finally from city council member Carol Jackson. Your planning commissioners, I'm writing my statement in support of the November 18th meeting agenda item, ordinance amendment one for planning commission approval of the amendment that will no longer permit cluster developments proposed for new development in the short term ahead of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. From input invited by city planned watershed management and housing experts to date, we know the 2020 comp plan is expected to generate a variety of new zoning decisions. We anticipate those new tools to be useful, especially in areas designated to need better protective and more dry development best practices designed to mitigate climate generated stormwater flooding challenges from the low country combination of sea level tidal creeks rise along with more frequent and intense rain events. While it is likely that our planning experts may be proposing other zoning incentives aimed at achieving similar goals and objectives to the current cluster, we expecting that locations designated for a cluster concept will also take into consideration important land use factors such as elevation, special flood hazard areas, and other guidance that current cluster developments are not required to consider, including the minimal five acres currently eligible in any R-zone. And so in the knowledge that planning commission council will be considering cluster tools in 2021, it seems prudent and instructive to the development community to take a timeout from the tool. We are no longer confident will suit the city's long-term protective development goals. Instead, we will await the adoption of better tools to achieve the sustainable properties we want to facilitate and incentivize. To that end, during the review discussion by the community development committee and informational memo to those committee members, our staff counselor, Daniel McQueeney stated his informal opinion in essence to be that prohibiting new cluster developments will help ensure that city council and the planning commission have sufficient time to study, review, and enact a future replacement ordinance, such as the conservation ordinance. The city knows that a change is required, even if the details need work. So it makes sense to prohibit new cluster developments to provide sufficient time to work out the details. I believe on that essential basis, city council approved first reading of the ordinance amendment proposed for your approval on tonight's meeting agenda. I hope to be listening into the meeting currently taking care of her mother, hence her statement and request for your consideration approval.
Thank you, Chloe. So now we're here and that's all the written comments and support. I think you said there was one person that wanted to be heard that signed up to speak opposed to the amendment?
Correct. Yes. Josh Dix. You are, your microphone has been enabled, so whenever you're ready.
Yes, ma'am. Members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. Cluster development is a very useful tool for land use and environmental concerns. Many of the issues that were described in the folks' opinions that want to do away with it are the exact things that the cluster development can help with the flooding and environmental concerns. You look at the city as a whole, Burns Down, Avondale, many areas of West Ashley are a great examples of cluster development and how it's been used correctly. Doing away with it will be detrimental to the ability for planners and developers to have good development and sound policy. We don't see why getting rid of cluster at this time, just to reintroduce it as another issue is the right purpose at this time. We've also submitted a written comment and appreciate the distribution of that. I'm happy to answer any other questions or concerns y'all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dix. And you, for the record, just let us know your address?
Yes, sir. 640 Rutledge Avenue.
Great, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Chloe, are there written comments in opposition?
No.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone from staff, again, since the city is really the applicant, like to respond anything? Or if not, we'll close out the public hearing?
Staff is available for any questions if you have any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. That'll close the public aspect of this. And ask any commission members to ask questions or make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
Thank you. I'm kinda, I'm kind of standing here in the middle of a lot of information that I don't have. So I do have several questions of staff. Is there, since we're, we're looking at a citywide ordinance and we're being given comments from a single point in the city where it doesn't appear that this has worked for them. So I'm really concerned by the fact that we're trying to adopt something or remove something that's being used citywide. So can the city provide any kind of balance on this? Like, are there examples where cluster developments have really worked? Where we've seen the benefit of this, where we've increased green space or we've managed stormwater? Are there examples that can be provided here or information or data that we can have to, to weigh this fully in scope of the whole city?
And what I can tell you is that we've had in the city, we just did a little kind of cheat sheet of how many different clusters were that have been developed under this ordinance in the city. And I guess it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12 different developments that were over a total of 286 acres in the city. They allowed for 760 units on those 286 acres. So essentially that's a net development yield of 2.6 units an acre, which is lower than a lot of our suburban areas' density. And they have also allowed for preservation of over 140 acres of area as preserved green space. They're scattered, there's some, there's 75 units of cluster development in West Ashley, 154 in the Kaneaway area, 367 approved on Johns Island and 164 on James Island. And I know that a lot of folks have had concern in the Central Park Road and Fleming Road area. And, you know, that is an area that has had three different cluster developments approved. One which is fully built, one which is under construction, and then one which is before you again tonight later on the agenda. So, you know, I think this has been, that area of James Island is an area that has had frustrations with them. And, you know, there's no doubt that the cluster developments are very different from the development that we've primarily seen in our city over the past 60 years or so. But by their design, they are designed to be better for stormwater and help preserve green spaces in a way that conventional lot standards don't do. But a lot of folks don't like to see the houses clustered close together and, and don't like them being clustered close together next to existing larger lot subdivisions. And so I think that has created a lot of the concern about them. But the premise behind the ordinance is that they would be better for stormwater. We do have a new ordinance that is, we've worked on, but we are kind of on hold now until we get the comprehensive plan done. But hopefully that ordinance would address a lot of the concerns there have been about the existing cluster ordinance and would also help us with some of the housing issues that, you know, we're looking at. The comprehensive plan is going to have a lot of information about the housing situation in Charleston and the affordability issue in Charleston and some issues and ideas about how we can address those.
And that was the conservation or the conservation ordinance that you're referring to?
It's been up before planning commission at one point and was deferred. And upon, you know, further comment and discussion with our leadership, the determination was to hold off on that until we get the comprehensive plan done and then work on it as per recommendations that are in the comprehensive plan.
So this, this becomes a procedural question. What's the time pressure? Like, we all agree that this is an ordinance that needs a look. It's, you know, it was modern when it started and there, there are newer models and newer additions. And we had a conservation ordinance, but we're waiting for a comp plan. Where's the time pressure? If we all agree that we should sunset this for a better ordinance, then there's nothing there for us to do. There's no tool left in the toolkit that was providing something for us. It's maybe it's not perfect, but for some, based on some of these successes that you mentioned, it was providing some successes in some regions of the city. How do we create a time pressure to get the new ordinance done if we agree? And I'm not suggesting anything here, but if we agree to sunset this now, we're removing a tool that does have some benefit in some part of the city. So can you give me a sense of how we would create that pressure to get that conservation ordinance done ASAP as soon as the comp plan's done? How do we, how do we do that procedurally?
We certainly could, could work to achieve that. I think that, you know, we'll see at what point the comprehensive plan gets adopted. You know, we're shooting for a draft of that being done January, February, going on to city council in probably March. You know, not sure if it would get, you know, adopted right off. But once it's adopted by council, then we could move on to implementation, which would be ordinances like the proposed conservation ordinance. So, you know, you'd be looking spring, summer, next year at best.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna be so bold right now to move for deferral for more information to the next meeting. Because I would like to hear if we could put into the ordinance that was presented to us from council, a timeframe. I would like, you know, a legal interpretation of that. Could we say we would agree to sunset this? And I, and I heard what Chip said, that it might be easier to sunset at first, give us time to look at stuff. But that, and I, and I see those points, but I don't want this to just go on unended. So I'm gonna move for deferral to next meeting to get some of those questions answered procedurally. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. There are other comments from, is there a second or other comments from commission members, questions?
Mr. Bailey has his hand raised.
Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
I was, I was gonna actually make some comments and ask some questions similar to those that Ms. Jacobs was raising. But I'm, I'm willing to second her motion for deferral. Because I think maybe we, we could take a little more time on this.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. So we have a motion to defer by Ms. Jacobs, second by Mr. Bailey. Other comments or questions from commission members?
Mr. Lassane has his hand raised.
Mr. Lassane, you go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and I'm, I'm minded to agree with my fellow commissioners. But I noticed that Mr. McQueeney is on the panel and I wondered if he wouldn't mind giving us a sense of the advice he gave to the previous group that he spoke to.
Yeah, yes, sir. I'm happy to. And I don't remember exactly what I said. I think Councilmember Jackson had asked me to sort of summarize what I said. And I was probably hasty in the way I put it. Most of the way I've dealt with these has been on James Island because I wasn't here before that. So I haven't, you know, I, probably a little bit hasty to say that everybody agrees it doesn't work. Because most of what I've heard has, has dealt with developments that it's perceived that it doesn't work. My comment about amending it is, is one point I would like to address. So repealing a cluster development ordinance is sort of like repealing a PUD. It's, it's very difficult to do because you already have a lot of the benefits of the developer done in some circumstances, but the benefits of the city are, you know, depend on the cluster development continuing in effect in perpetuity. So my comment about it doesn't really make sense to, to amend the current cluster development and replace it with something new is, is true in that you, you want to leave the cluster development as it exists in effect for past developments or developments that are currently building because the benefits need to continue. But, so you're not replacing it with something, you're sort of adding something different, but prohibiting new cluster developments. And that's kind of what I was trying to get across to, I, I don't remember if it was Committee on Community Development or City Council at the time. But it does, you know, it, it allows you to hit the pause button if it's not working in some circumstances. There's really no, no way for staff to do that. City council could adopt a moratorium on these, which is, you know, pretty much the same thing, depending on who you include within the moratorium. But it was, it was really more if it's not working in one, in, in a certain circumstance, the only way to hit a pause button until you get a better, you know, form of ordinance in place is to do it this way. And it wouldn't, you could, you could continue considering the new ordinance and not have to replace this at all because this will take care of itself. The new ordinance doesn't need to address this ordinance.
Mr. Lassane, you want to have any other comments or questions on that?
Well, I will defer to Ms. Harrison, I believe, has her hand raised and you can come back to me.
Great, thank you. Ms. Harrison, you go ahead.
Yes, so I, I think a deferral is probably appropriate in this context. But one thing, I understand we're talking about conservation, we're talking about the issues that, you know, a certain portion of our city is, is facing. But one element that I recall, as I was reading the ordinance, talks about accessory dwelling units. And I know that we've recently passed, you know, several ordinances that address affordable housing and including in that is accessory dwelling units. And so as we have that discussion, I think what I would like to have is just a little bit more information about how this new ordinance or as we go forward, how, how we're addressing the affordable housing piece that may also overlap in that ADU portion of the cluster development. So I don't know how, you know, what's the interplay in, in how, how that's going to be addressed. And I think that's something to me that, that, that is important.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Anyone else?
As we proceed.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments from commission members? And Mr. Lassane, would you like to speak again?
No, I've got my question answered. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson has her hand raised.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, you go ahead.
Can you hear me this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, I agree, and I think in over a decade on this commission, I very, very rarely would, uh, be in favor of deferral. But I just think this is a, this is kind of an overcompensation here. This is very complex. There are a lot of, lot of very important parts to this. And some, some things that I think haven't been discussed. So, um, in this situation, I think I'm on board with Ms. Jacobs and everyone else in terms of just deferring.
Thanks, ma'am. And it, and I'm going to chime in to say that I think, um, you know, why throw, if it has positive aspects to it, it sounds like it does from, um, Mr. Morgan's comments about ones that have worked. Obviously, we're hearing about the ones that hadn't, and that's not good. But, uh, I, I'm, I agree with you all. Let's see if we can get more information. Is there other questions or comments? If not, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Any other commission members want to speak?
My only comment, uh, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, to make sure that staff understand what it is the commission is asking for so that we're not coming back in here next month without everybody's questions having been addressed.
Yes, sir. Mr. Morgan, is that, is it clear to you and staff what the question is? I think, I know Ms. Jacobs said, when are you going to hear back on this? Or, Mr. Morgan, is that clear to staff?
Maybe if it could be restated, because I, I had down that she was asking about the, um, getting a better sense of the timeframe for the, the new ordinance. But i- is there more info than that? Because I, I, I feel like we kind of discussed the timeframe for the new ordinance, the conservation ordinance, but...
Ms. Harrison, didn't you have some, um, Ms. Harrison, I think you had some things that you, uh, wanted to be addressed in that as well, didn't you?
Yes, I did, because of the, the, uh, accessory dwelling unit and how the interplay between that and affordable housing. Uh, since we've, we just, you know, made a recommendation for approval of that ADU ordinance.
Okay, and so the ADU is also in the new ordinance that we have on hold. Because, uh, it would, uh, have ADUs that would be allowed for affordable housing. And it would also have some incentives density-wise for affordable units within the development itself.
Ms. Jacobs, anything else you'd like to chime in, uh, make sure we get it right?
I think that's clear. I, I would like, I did want to only defer it to next meeting with the opportunity to understand how quickly we could get to, you know, a better, brighter, you know, ordinance for everyone, um, addressing these concerns. And, you know, all the new incentives that we could put into this.
And Ms. Johnson has her hand raised.
And I just lost my train...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just lost my train of thought, so let her...
Ms. Johnson, you go ahead.
Okay, I think mine is a little bit different. I'm, my concern is more that we are sunsetting and, um, looking to something brighter that's far in the future. But in essence, I mean, there's, there's kind of a, a scent of a downzoning with the whole thing. So I, I just feel like this, this undefined gap. And, and I know we're working towards this. But I feel like it leaves, uh, that there can be a lot of, of, uh, developments and, and, um, people with financial interests that are left in the lurch and there really is no place for them, um, in this in-between period. And I do feel like this is very different than a moratorium because we're basically sunsetting this and saying there's something to come. And I don't know how comfortable I am with that, so maybe just some more clarity, um, from that standpoint.
And I remember my comment, and I also remember my comment, is that maybe we need to re- see what might be this conservation ordinance before we, you know, I think we need to see what we're thinking about before we get rid of something altogether. You know, per the comments, I think we need to, yeah, I understand that that ordinance will probably go through some iterations and some, you know, based on comp planning, but we're getting, you know, by the time we see that in December, we're, we've, we're way into the comp planning now. We probably understand a lot more than we did when it was written and we saw it a while back. So I think seeing that, at least a draft of that new ordinance would help us understand, you know, what, better what our questions are. Thank you.
So i- i- if I could just ask for a little clarification. In the context of looking at the sunset of the cluster ordinance, you would like to see where we are with the, the conservation ordinance, not have it on the agenda also. Just have a review of it in the context of the sunset of the cluster ordinance.
Just for information, I think everybody might feel more comfortable understanding the procedure if we see where we're going and make sure we're going in the right direction before we, essentially, we're starting the process with sunsetting this cluster development. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I don't know where we're going yet and, um, how long it might take us to get there. And, um, as Angie mentioned, there are some things in the middle that could be problematic for, for everybody. So let's make sure that we're not creating that problem.
Okay, a- a- and, and Mr. Chairman, I have one other to, to go along with Ms. Jacobs. I think, I think looking to the future is good and I think best. But I also think I would like to understand, um, from staff what they think the issues are with this ordinance that it's created. So that we understand the, I mean, I, it seems to me in this discussion that, that, uh, people understand that there have been problems, but we don't really, we haven't had a discussion about what those are. So what is it, what problems are there with the existing ordinance that the new conservation ordinance, whatever that becomes, seeks to address?
Thank you, Mr. Lassane. Um, Mr. Morgan, are we clear?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions from the commission members? If not, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Motion was made by Ms. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Lassane, I believe, to defer. Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey, it was Mr. Bailey's second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey, I apologize. Mr. Bailey, seconded, uh, Mr. Bailey, will call for the vote?
I'm in favor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Harrison?
I'm in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Thanks. Mr. Lassane?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you, sir, and I'm in favor as well, so that's six in favor and none opposed. The next item on the agenda is subdivision, number one. Central Park Road, Central Park Cluster Development, James Island, TMS number three four zero zero three oh 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 seven. Approximately one, ten point three five acres, thirty-eight lots. Request one-year extension of subdivision concept plan approval. Sold single-family residential, SR one. Mr. Morgan?
Uh, and Mr. Chairman, there was some, uh, question as to whether the commission might want to have a, um, executive session for, uh, a legal briefing on these issues. That would be up to the commission if they would like to do so. But we do have our attorneys, uh, present for a legal briefing if, if the commission would like to do so.
Okay, before we start, would any, um, commission members like to call, uh, motion or make a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Lassane has his hand raised.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I would like the mood that we go into executive session to, uh, get legal advice, uh, from our council.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Now, uh, thank you, Ms. Johnson, I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and, uh, to a roll call vote on the motion to go into executive session. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Ms. Lassane?
Aye, in favor.
Thanks, and I'm in favor as well. Mr. Morgan, just, uh, update everyone or Chloe, how we're going to do this, how we're going to take a break? And, uh, so everyone's on the same page?
Yeah.
Correct, there'll be a break from the regular meeting. We'll just put up a screen that says you're in executive session, that you were not, you know, discussing, you're not taking any action in those executive sessions. In the executive session, it's just for legal advice.
Right, and so for, for participants, uh, for participants on the call, um, that will not be in the executive session, uh, as Christopher said, you'll see a, a slide that says executive session in progress. You will not hear anything, um, from our end. And, and I could ask all commissioners to also please shut off your videos during this time. For everyone who's going to be in executive session, you, you were sent a conference call number in your email. Let me know right now if you did not receive that so that I can get you that information.
Chloe, and we appreciate everyone's patience on this. We'll be as quick as we can. Chloe, do I need to call in from, um...
From your personal phone, yes. So if commissioners can use their, their personal cell phones, um, or, you know, whatever, landline, whatever they have, uh, next to them.
Chloe, it's Angie. Procedurally, my, my computer's not working, so I'm doing this on my phone. So I will need to stop video and leave the meeting and come back. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Thank you.
And, and Chloe, I don't immediately see... I'm sorry, I don't immediately see a number for executive session in my panelists. Am I, I'm not sure if I'm missing it?
So it, this was sent along with the public comment package earlier this afternoon?
Okay, let me...
Can you give us that, Chloe, or is that what everybody be hearing that?
I see, I see it now, thank you.
It's in your email.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And if everybody would go, mute your existing Zoom meeting.
Ready access by CenturyLink.
Okay.
Please enter your access code.
Please enter your access code.
Yeah, turn your video back on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right next to the phone on the bottom of the screen?
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
You asked me the question, I just. So it clicked. Okay, so I think I got it right.
Just click one.
Commission members, is there a motion that we go out of executive session?
So moved and thank everybody for their information.
Ms. Jacobs moves that we come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, not Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bailey or Mr. LaSane. Thank you both. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Ms. LaSane?
Aye in favor.
Great, and I'm in favor as well. So that motion is six does nothing to come out of executive session. I just want for the public aspect to know, no action, no motion, no action was taken in executive session. All we did was get some information, so no action was taken in executive session. We'll go ahead and read that. Uh, we've already read the subdivision number one into the record. So, Mr. Morgan, we'll go back to you.
Ms. Harp is going to give the background on this subdivision.
Okay, Ms. Harp, thank you. Ms. Harp, I hope you're doing well. You go ahead.
I'm doing good, thank you. Good evening. The applicant, this is for the Central Park Cluster Development. The applicant is seeking the second one-year extension of the concept plan approval. The concept plan was approved by the Planning Commission on November 15th of 2017. And the first approval was extended last year to November 15th of 2020. The staff recommends approval of the one-year extension with the same conditions as the concept plan approval in 2017. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch up. Is there, um, great, thank you. Um, we'll go ahead and I guess the, is the applicant with us?
Yes.
Chloe, you go ahead.
Hold on one second. Okay, Dr. Lessiman, um, can you please share your video?
Chloe, who we'd be hearing from?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Ellis Leesman. I'm at four eighteen.
Thank you, Ellis Leesman, you go ahead.
Thank you so much, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening, for your service to the city. Uh, as Ms. Harp already explained, uh, we are before you for a second one-year extension of vested rights on the Central Park Road project. The initial approval was in November two thousand and seventeen, and under state law and local ordinance, there is the right to obtain up to five one-year extension periods for the approval of that concept plan, which is considered, under state law and local ordinance, a site-specific development plan, which confers vested rights. Uh, the language, uh, under the, uh, ordinance indicates that the extension shall or must be granted unless there is an amendment to land regulations that has prohibits the, uh, the project from going forward. And I'll submit to you that, that has not been the case. There is no prohibition of the project. Uh, and in fact, also, the vested rights, uh, state law indicates that such a prohibition would really only apply, in our belief, when landowner would consent to that. So, um, projects on James Island, as already has been mentioned in this meeting this evening, do garner a lot of attention, but the legal standard, um, for the matter that's before you remains the same in terms of granting this extension under state law and, and local ordinance. We would not have expected that we would have had to ask this, uh, commission for another extension. We did obtain unanimous approval of a request last year of the same type, but there has been continuous, uh, agency review, administrative review, and technical review of this project since November of two thousand and nineteen, when I last asked for, uh, this type of extension. Again, there's been, um, multi-agency review between Charleston County, uh, the city, OCRM, DHEC, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, all of these agencies are involved. That is in, in, continued through five rounds of TRC in the past year. Um, and at this point, um, ladies and gentlemen, all of the comments from TRC have been resolved, except for those relating to final approvals from other state agencies. So, uh, I would represent to you all that once those final approvals from those state agencies are obtained, we consider them to be imminent, that, um, the project would proceed and would no longer be in this technical review process. Now, those comments that we have resolved include the fact that this property was established as, by the city, as a special protection area. You all may be familiar with that term, but it's a heightened designation under the city's stormwater manual, that the only specifically designated special protection area in the entire city is the Church Creek Basin. But the city did apply that designation to this specific property in order to apply its most stringent requirements, and these stringent requirements have been met. And again, we're waiting on just a couple of other agency approvals in order to be able to move forward because the city wants to see that those approvals are obtained before the TRC process is completed. So, uh, a lot has happened over the last, you know, three, two and a half years that this project's been in review, so I wanna be sensitive to your time and just let you know that that's been a comprehensive, thorough review for the same reason that folks may speak, uh, to you tonight. This project's been subjected to a very high level of scrutiny. And so my client would ask to not be penalized, to forfeit their rights in this project, simply because everyone's gone through a heightened and, and really an extreme level of review for this project. So, again, I noted at the, at the outset that the extension should be granted unless there's some uh, amendment to the ordinances that would prohibit approval. There is no moratorium in place, there is no prohibition of approval. This project, just like many others, uh, that were involved in the TRC process prior to the publication of the revised Stormwater Manual, will continue to adhere to the, uh, the Stormwater Manual that was in place, and this project is not unique in that aspect. Uh, and the city has made that decision and is applying that to all similarly situated, uh, projects. And even the new manual doesn't prohibit projects of this type. Uh, and again, the most heightened standards have been applied to this project already, and we're meeting them. So, with all that being said, um, I thank you for your time and for your attention and would request an approval of this one-year extension. And, uh, here to answer any questions or provide any other information that the members of the commission may ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leesman. Um, Chloe, do we have any, uh, written comments or anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application?
Uh, no one who signed up to speak in favor, and no comments submitted in favor.
Great. In that case, we'll go ahead and, uh, people that have, go ahead and list, the people that have, uh, listed to speak in opposition to the application.
First on the list is Harriet Reviss. Ms. Reviss, you should be able to unmute yourself now and speak.
Okay, um, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Harriet Reviss, and I am president of the Marlboro Neighborhood Association. I live at five oh nine West Wimbledon Drive. I am opposed to this request. This is not a simple renewal request because the renewal date for the Central Park Cluster was November fifteenth, which means that it, it has officially expired. Last year, the developer asked for a renewal request in a timely fashion at the October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting. I've looked at the Planning Commission agendas for the past five years and see no precedent for a developer asking for a renewal of a concept plan after the renewal date has expired, except during the meeting on June seventeenth of this year. The developer made a statement at that meeting that he had tried to get on the agenda in a timely manner for an April renewal, but of course, the Planning Commission did not meet in March, April, or May of this year. March would have been the appropriate meeting for that applicant's request. I would like to call your attention to Article eight, Part two, Section fifty-four dash eight zero nine, four G, in the zoning ordinance. The fact that the city saw a need to place this section in the ordinance and the fact that the language specifically says, "Should a concept plan approval expire for any reason," is important. No grace periods are delineated. And if merely submitting an application for renewal were sufficient, there would be supplemental language to that effect. One submits an application for the right to appear at a Planning Commission meeting in order to then seek reapproval from the commission during its meeting. It states that if there is an expiration of a renewal, and should it be renewed, the reapproval shall be subject to the current zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. Of course, we now have the new two thousand and twenty stormwater guidelines in place, and from what I heard at the city council meeting on October thirteenth, the removal of the cluster ordinance went into effect with the approval at the first reading of that. Another point that I would like to make is that I was present for the November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen Planning Commission meeting when approval was first given for this development. There was a very lengthy discussion about the approval. I believe it was the chairman, Gordon Gier, who added a second condition to the motion that the drainage plan must more than exceed stormwater guidelines in place for the property. I recently listened to the audio file from the November two thousand and seventeen meeting, and I respectfully submit that, according to what I heard, the second condition in your planning package tonight is not stated as it was presented at the November two thousand and seventeen meeting. I have mentioned this to the stormwater department several times, but it was only recently that I was able to actually listen to the audio file and verify what I thought I had remembered. We do not believe that the developer has been held to this very rigorous standard by TRC. It is a special protection area, and there is more rigorous, um, uh, there are more rigorous guidelines, but the condition that was placed when this was approved in two thousand and seventeen was that the plan must more than exceed the stormwater guidelines in place for the property. Dr. Immerman is an expert hydrologist, um, who, uh, we have hired, and he did a report. And his report gives one example that the city has not followed its own stated guidelines to request that the downstream system capacity be calculated so as to be able to make a critical determination about post-development peak discharge rates. As you are probably aware by now, the two thousand and seventeen commissioners did not have the state mandated education requirements to qualify to be seated on the commission. There is an outstanding FOIA request from October two thousand and nineteen asking the same question about the two thousand and nineteen commissioners. Thank you for your service, and also a thank you to city staff who are making these Zoom meetings possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reviss. Uh, Chloe, who's next?
Uh, next is Theodosha Wade. Um, Ms. Wade, you should be able to unmute and speak now.
Ms. Wade, if you would, um, when you say your name, tell us your, uh, address as well, if you would.
Yes. So, my name is Theodosha Wade, and I'm at six twenty-four Flint Street in Laurel Park on James Island. And, um, uh, Harriet did a great job of articulating the, the issues, um, with the expiration of the, uh, renewal, uh, that was due on November the fifteenth. Um, the idea that those that are renewed after these expirations must conform to the new regulations, meaning the two thousand and twenty stormwater guidelines. Um, the problem with the special protection area, that this has been declared a special protection area and that this has had sort of a doubly higher than normal, higher than normal standard put on it, and so we don't believe that that's been met. Um, and the biggest problem is, of course, that we're worried about flooding in this area. There's already a huge amount of flooding. Our neighbors experience, uh, water in their homes uh, about once a year, and this, uh, Dr. Immerman's study has really, uh, brought a lot to our attention. Um, we are not engineers, and we are not hydrologists, and so it has been a, a concern for us that these questions have not been fully answered. Um, the issue of the, um, downstream capacity, um, you know, i- is just, all these things are a problem. Um, and then also just the infrastructure and the maintenance of our infrastructure. We've got a, uh, you know, a gentleman in our neighborhood who does, um, ditch patrol because we really have so much maintenance that has gone undone for so long that we have big issues. And, you know, we know that there was a pipe that was clogged and actually sealed, um, that the city didn't even know about. So, there's a lot of unknown infrastructure in this as well, which is, which creates the problem. When they say to us, "It will not cause flooding." This new Central Park Cluster stormwater plan takes into account everything, and it should make it better. That, we really don't believe that's gonna be true because the Fleming Wood, um, subdivision is a cluster, and they said the same thing about that, the city did, and we aren't getting, we, we are getting more, uh, flooding. So, it, it, it's very concerning. Uh, but thank you so much for your time, and we do appreciate the jobs that you all do 'cause I know it's a huge commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Thank you, Ms. Wade. Uh, Chloe, is anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
One second. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Stephen Immerman?
Okay.
Uh, hold on one second.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'm, uh, due to, I'm getting a notification from Zoom. And Charlie, if you could mute, I'm getting an echo.
Okay, I'll mute.
Dr. Immerman, I'm gonna have to promote you to a panelist 'cause it won't, uh, because of the version of Zoom, Zoom that you're using. Um, so that's just, I'll, I'll have to change you back to attendee after you're done.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir, and give us your address as well, if you would, sir.
Uh, I will. Um, my, I'm, uh, Dr. Stephen Immerman. Uh, my current address is seven eighty-five North, two hundred West, Spanish Fork, Utah. I formerly lived at nine Deveraux Avenue, Charleston, South Carolina. Thank you very much for the honor of addressing the Planning Commission. Uh, I'm Dr. Stephen Immerman. Uh, I am the stormwater consultant for the South Carolina Coastal Conservation League. I was quite moved when I heard Councilmember Ross Appel describe the current state of flooding on James Island as an existential threat. By this, I understood that flooding threatens the continued human inhabitation of James Island. Yet, in the midst of an existential threat, the city is fast-tracking the conversion of forests and wetlands into the Central Park Development. An essential feature of fast-tracking is the disregard for regulations. I am now reading from the two thousand and thirteen City of Charleston Design Standards Manual. Flooding exists in many locations around the city where development densities have increased to the point where stormwater controls have become overwhelmed. The following design criteria shall be used for projects discharging to receiving waters within these areas. The post-development peak discharge rates are restricted to one-half the pre-development rates for the two- and ten-year twenty-four-hour storm event or to the downstream system capacity, whichever is less. The city of Charleston has not required the proponents of the Central Park Development to take into account the current downstream system capacity. I have explained this discrepancy in a long report. I'm also in a memo to Mayor Teklenburg, and I would be happy to share this with members of the commission. I am told that there should be no political interference in the permitting process. It should be clear that looking the other way, while a city department disregards city regulations, constitutes political interference. Please stop and think about this. Thank you.
Thank you, s- thank you, sir. Uh, Chloe, anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes. We have, we have one more. Susan Milliken, you should be able to unmute and speak now.
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, and if you give us your address as well, uh, with your name, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Good, good evening. My name is Susan Milliken, and I live at seven sixty-two Fort Sumter Drive on James Island. I would also ask that you all please deny the second extension of the subdivision approval in light of the procedural and timeline defects specified by Dr. Reviss. And I would also ask you to open your minds to a more creative look at your responsibility on this topic and not just feel bound by the letter of the law. As you know, many of us have been concerned with the subdivision plan for the Central Park Cluster neighborhood of thirty-eight homes, which would be sandwiched in between the Marlboro and Laurel Park neighborhoods on James Island. We imagine that planning commissioners and others have seen photos of the severe flooding that is occurring regularly in this area, which is the Central Park Drainage Basin. When the Central Park Cluster subdivision plan was first approved by your body in two thousand and seventeen, you did so with the condition that drainage easements should be evaluated to confirm that they can meet or exceed the required capacity of stormwater. This is exactly what the city's professionals on the TRC have been doing for the last three years, and it remains impossible for the subdivision plan to meet this condition. The required capacity of stormwater simply cannot be met or exceeded in the subdivision plan. It's an impossibility. This plan did not meet the required capacity for stormwater for city standards in 2017, 2018, 2019, or even now in 2020. That still hasn't changed. Nearby residents asked to meet with this builder's engineers to detail their concerns about drainage. The engineers were happy to do that, yet were told that the builder would not allow such a meeting. The builder who has submitted the subdivision plan to you for an extension of approval twice now has filed suit and sued the City of Charleston instead of doing all they could to revise the plan to meet the commission's condition pertaining to stormwater capacity. Hence your need for an executive session tonight. It has been our frustration with this builder's refusal to draw up a better plan, which led to the hiring of Dr. Immerman, whom you have heard from tonight, to review this plan under both the city's 2013 and 2020 stormwater regulations. As you've heard tonight, Dr. Immerman concluded and has said that no new development in the Central Park Drainage Basin can meet the standards of either the city's 2013 or 2020 stormwater guidelines. It's simply impossible. That is how problematic this drainage basin presently is and how antiquated the drainage infrastructure is. Major drainage infrastructure improvements must be made in this area for additional residential development to be able to meet the minimum threshold and the planning commission's stormwater capacity condition. And more bluntly, the city's own stormwater standards. So we ask that you vote to deny the second extension of the subdivision approval. The applicant has shown disinterest in revising their plan to meet your condition for a number of years now and has sued the city to boot. This plan will remove 19 grand trees and many more unprotected massive trees consisting of pines and sweet gum. This subdivision plan will certainly worsen flooding in this area and put neighboring residents in harm's way and devalue their properties. You might say that your only responsibility is to look at the zoning and the subdivision plan and to see if the plan follows the zoning requirements. Well, with respect, we say your duty is greater than that. And that your duty is to step in when the city's TRC or other entities, DHEC or OCRM, cannot greenlight a development for some four years due to its subdivision plan's inability to comply with regulations, state or otherwise, city ordinances, stormwater regulations, or your own planning commission conditions. Let the chips fall where they may. If a court of law needs to sort all this out, so be it. But please do not continue to grant annual extensions to a subdivision plan that is clearly inadequate, will worsen flooding in the Central Park Basin, and cannot meet or exceed the stormwater capacity specified in the city's own stormwater regulations. Further, we would ask that city staff and the TRZ zoning rep, who may be Mr. Schultz, please put this subdivision plan under an additional review to see if it actually does meet the very specific criteria of the, of the cluster zoning, which requires 50% open space on a parcel over 10 acres. And that you make that a condition for a new look after four years at the plan again against the cluster zoning ordinance if you, if you do approve the extension this evening. Thank you so much and I appreciate you letting me go on, so.
Thank you, Ms. Milliken. Chloe, anyone else signed up to speak?
No one else signed up to speak. We have nine comments submitted.
Okay, will you and Mr. Morgan go ahead and read those comments?
Yes.
For the record.
Okay. Our first comment in opposition is from Franny Henty at 615 Flint Street. Dear Planning Commission, thank you for your service. I oppose the extension on the Central Park Cluster. Ms. Henty shares audio from November 15th, 2017. A link which I believe was also provided to planning commission. And it's, it's in your packet, so if you want to watch that link later, you can. The plan has not met the conditions that Terry Seabrook mentioned in the meeting. Engineers Jason Monday and Les Phillips of Seaman Whitesides offered to meet with me and Dr. Reviss to help us understand how the development would not harm us. But Joshua Craig would not let that happen. It seems they choose the route of seeing the city, then working towards solutions with their neighbors. Section 629 through 50, Membership Terms of Office Compensation Qualifications. Subsection C, In the Appointment of Planning Commission Members, the appointing authority shall consider their professional expertise, knowledge of the community, and concern for the future welfare of the total community and citizens. Members shall represent a broad cross-section of the interests and concerns within the jurisdiction. There are at least five real estate agents the night of November 15th, 2017, not a broad cross-section as required by state law. Section 6229, 380, Funding of Commission's Expenditures Contracts. A local planning commission may cooperate with contracts with or accept funds from federal government agencies, state government agencies, local general purpose government, school districts, special purpose districts, including those of other states, public, or lean massary agencies, or private individuals, or corporations. It may expend the funds and it may carry out such cooperative undertakings and contracts as it considers necessary. It looked like issues were taken from the applicant with bringing other agencies in. Section 629, 510, Planning Process Elements Comprehensive Plan. Subsection B, Surveys and Studies in Which Planning Elements or Basements Include Consideration of Central Complex with the Adjacent Jurisdiction and Regional Plans or Issues. Subsection C, The Basic Planning Process for All Planning Elements Must Include but Not Be Limited to One, Inventory of Existing Conditions. Planning Commission did not have that when they approved CPC. And a city ordinance states the city relies on the developer for this info. And the developers got that block pipe wrong, so what else did they get wrong? Chris Wannamaker testified the conditions at the intake were fully functional, no issue. I hired a surveyor who found out, who found a lot wrong with it. And the county did $150,000 improvement after I brought the report to county. We have not, one, we have had not one improvement from the city in the three years that this plan was brought to TRC. We've had some studies, but Sunday, Lymphas has told me on 1218, 2018. And there's a quote that's since been struck by Ms. Lymphas is that she did not say this. It's in the record if you'd like to read it. And, and then, so now we have the findings of Dr. Immerman. Section 629, 1130, Regulations, When Facilities and for the Distribution of Population and Traffic, which will tend to create conditions favorable to health, safety, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or the general welfare. In particular, the regulations shall prescribe that no land development plan, including subdivision flats, will be approved unless all land intended for uses, building sites can be used safely for building purposes without danger from flood or other inundation or form from other menaces to health, safety, or public welfare. This is not a safe traffic drainage or sewage area. Subsection B, These Regulations May Include Requirements as to Extent Which and Manner in Which Streets Must Be Graded, Surface, and Improved in Water Sewer Septic Tanks. Septic tanks are leaching into the... So there's a mixture of her commentary mixed with the quotes from the ordinance. So I'm switching, this is commentary. Septic tanks are leaching into the common water mayway, causing the stormwaters to be contaminated with the unsafe water with high content of fecal matter. Back to quoting from Ordinance, Section 629, 1360, Certification. Subsection A, An Appointed Official or Professional Employee Must Certify to satisfy the educational requirements in Section 629, 1340. Filing a certification form and documentation with the clerk no later than the anniversary date of the appointed official's appointment or a professional employee's appointment each year. Sub B, Each Certification Form Must Be Substantially Conformed to the Following Form and All Applicable Portions of the Form Must Be Completed. C, Each Appointed Official and Professional Employee is responsible for obtaining a written documentation that either is assigned by representative, the sponsor of any approved orientation or continuing education program for which credit is claimed. Acknowledges that the flyer attended the program for which credit is claimed. Or two establishes the filer's exemption. City clerk does not have, back to her commentary. The city clerk does not have these required documents on file. So the city was functioning under an irregular planning commission when they approved the Central Park Cluster. Documentation must be filed with the clerk as required by the section. Citing Section 629, 1370, Sponsorship and Funding of Programs, Compliance and Exemption Certification of Public Records. Subsection B, The Clerk Must Keep in the Official Public Records Originals of All Filed Forms and Documentation that certify compliance with educational requirements for three years after the calendar year in which each form is filed. And all filed forms and documentation that certify an exemption for the tenure of the appointed official or professional employee. City clerk, back to commentary. The city clerk does not have these required documents on file. So the city was functioning under an irregular planning commission when they approved the Central Park Cluster. Section citing Section 629, 1540, Conditions and Limitations. Wherefore a vested right established under conditionally approved site-specific development plan or conditionally approved phase development plan may be terminated by the local governing body upon its determination following notice and public hearing that the landowner has failed to meet the terms of the conditional approval. Where 16, The Land Development Ordinances or Regulations Adopted pursuant to this article may provide additional terms or phrases consistent with the conditions and limitations of the section that are necessary for the implementation or determination of vested rights. History, 2004, Act Number 287, Section 2, Effective July 1st, 2005. Furthermore, more commentary. The city zoning ordinances are failing us on James Island. Citing Section 629, 710, Zoning Ordnances Purposes. A zoning ordinances must be for the general purposes of guiding development and coordinates with existing and future needs and promoting the public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, appearance, prosperity, and general welfare. Cities and zoning ordinances must be made with reasonable consideration of the following purposes. Were applicable to prevent the order crowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population and to lessen congestion in streets, to facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive and harmonious community, to regulate the density and distribution of populations and the uses of buildings, structures, and land for trade and industry, residence, recreation, agriculture, forestry, conservation, water supply, sanitation, protection against floods, public activities, and other purposes to facilitate the adequate provision or availability of transportation, police, and fire protection, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other recreational facilities, affordable housing, disaster evacuation, other public services and requirements. James, back to commentary. We're almost done. James Island is too low of an elevation to house evacuation facilities. Number seven, citing again, number seven, and other dangers. And eight, to further the public welfare and any other regard specified by local governing body. Back to commentary, allowing this here now is faulty zoning and should not be future perpetuated. The planning commission, who is aware of the facts, I spoke briefly about this to Attorney General Alan Wilson on Saturday. He encouraged me to have a state rep to bring this issue to him and I'm working on that. Apart from the myriad of issues previously posted, the applicant is three days late on the annual extension approval.
Chloe, I'll go ahead and read, I'll give you a break and I'll read number two and three and let you take over with four, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Carol Temple, No Address Provided. We are living with the impacts of climate change that we either, we either ignored or we're not unknown, we're not, we're unknown. Today, we must make the hard decisions to prevent as much flooding caused by development as we can. I see and regularly experience the terrible flooding that now occurs on Central Park. We must mitigate and prevent more. This is the time to make hard decisions. Please provide by the 2020 Stormwater Manual and follow the new regulations. Comment number three is from Edward McNair, 489 West Wimbledon Drive. The Star, the CPCD's renewal expired on November the 15th, 2020. Section 54-809 says its expired renewal must conform to all new reg, new ordinances and regulations at the time of renewal. Therefore, the developer will have to go by the 2020 stormwater guidelines and the cluster ordinance is effectively off the book. I'm referring to the first reading by City Council of October the 13th, 2020. If you're, if you're to rule by the book, quote by the book, then the CPCD should be subject to current zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations at the time of reapproval is sought. I would also add that the COVID situation, COVID situation should not be used as an excuse. Zoom meetings have been running since June of this year. And the recent study by Dr. Steve Zimmerman, he found that said he did not hold, did not hold the developer to the stormwater guidelines published in 2013. From the text, quote, "The post-development peak discharge is, is restricted to half the pre-development rate for the two- and 10-year 24, 24-hour stormwater event or to the downstream system capacity, whichever is less." The city did not require that the downstream system capacity be calculated as to, so as to determine whatever is less. Perhaps it was an innocent error, but it's clear that the city did not hold the developer to the own stormwater guidelines. I am concerned that the stormwater infrastructure maintenance plan is currently adrift with no real, no real plan of action. Why should we allow more development if the city cannot maintain the current infrastructure? What is the communication and oversight action between the planning commission and the city on this matter? Lastly, I would like to urge planning commission, support and ordinance to remove the cluster ordinance. And sincerely, and sincerely, I sincerely ask, sincerely ask you to refrain the broader, refrain the broad approval of development in Charleston without proper study of impacts. Our older homes are prone to flooding due to fill, quote, fill and build tactics as well as overwhelmed stormwater drainage. This is common sense. Chloe, you go ahead and number four, Mr. Muzik.
Jimmy Muzik, adjoining, no address given, but is in the adjoining neighborhood. I'm Jimmy Muzik and I've lived in an adjoining neighborhood 21 years. First, let me ask if you are aware that the Central Park Cluster's last renewal expired on November 15th, 2020. Section 54-809 of the code states that expired renewals must conform to all new ordinances and regulations that are in place at the time of such a renewal. The 2017 Planning Commission did not have the state mandated education requirement, therefore is not qualified. Have approved the subdivision in the first place. Second, the City of Charleston is not following its own stormwater manual. Have you read Dr. Immerman's report? The planned drainage improvements must be completed and tested before you can consider adding another development to this area. Have you read the massive drainage improvement plans which ACOM and the City of Charleston has proposed? The fact that a study has been done and there's an extensive improvement plan clearly shows that the area floods and another development directly on top of the problem is a bad idea. Three years ago, your planning commission members talked about how they must approve this development because the rules were followed, even though they didn't like the idea. Well, now it is proven that the city is not following the rules of its own stormwater manual. Therefore, this development should not receive an extension. Thank you. And number five, Julie Hallman, James Island. I'm a resident of James Island and writing in reference to the Central Park Cluster's renewal, which expired on November 15th, 2020. Section 54-809 of the code states that expired renewals must conform to all new ordinances. Seems like this is a repeat of what I just read. She cites a new section, 54-809, subsection 4G. Reapproval for expired concept plans or PUD side plans should concept plan or PUD site plan approval expire for any reason. Any submission for planning commission reapproval shall be subject to current zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations in effect at the time reapproval is sought. We know that the city is not aware of the capabilities of the current stormwater infrastructure. It is reasonable to expect the city investigate and improve stormwater infrastructure before adding any new development. The subdivision should have never been approved. It is dangerous and will threaten surrounding properties. If it cannot be denied, the developer should, at the very least, be required to follow the 2020 stormwater manual per your own guidelines highlighted above. I would like to speak to this at the meeting this evening and I just caught that request at the end here. And I don't see Julie on the line. Number six, Todd McNerney, 484 E, East Wimbledon Drive. I'm writing with concerns regarding some perceived irregularities with the Central Park Cluster development with a sincere desire to see that this development meets the stormwater needs of our neighborhood. And property contains a drainage ditch that this development will utilize. I've watched the drainage ditch become a canal, perhaps even a tributary over the last few years. Regularly has standing water in it that moves up or down with the tide. This proposed development will certainly add more runoff to an already taxed system. I am distressed to learn that a third-party geohydrologist hired to review these plans has noted the city is not adhering to its own stormwater regulations from 2013, the ones in effect at the time these development plans were initially approved. I am equally concerned that a vigilant citizen neighborhood through a FOIA request has learned that the commissioners in place at the time this was originally approved did not appear to have completed the state required educational requirements. This development was approved without meeting the 2013 stormwater requirements by commissioners, not meeting the required educational standards. That sounds irregular at best. I have watched over the last decade as more and more of the open space around the Wamba Drainage Basin has been developed, clearly with little regard to how the new runoff from these development affects on already overtaxed system. The city recently completed a multi-year study and City Council has voiced a commitment to addressing the critical infrastructure needs recommended by it for this, by it for this basin. this basin. It is my sincere hope that the need for a more thoughtful approach to development in this area is considered. I did not purchase my home with the intent of it being creekside, yet that is what the drainage ditch has become, a creek, a creek that floods our yards and streets and it is astounding that our elected officials and civic representatives in government do not heed our, or nor acknowledge the concerns directly impacted by their decisions. Please require the CPC project to meet the current standards for stormwater required of such a cluster development dropped into a flood basin.
Chloe, I'll go ahead and read the last few if that's okay. Additional comments, position unclear, R Lane Parish, five oh two East Wimbledon Drive. I live with my daughter here in the Marlboro subdivision. The reason I'm emailing is to request a one year, is to request a one year renewal extension for the Central Park Cluster here on James Island. Dr. Emerson, a Dr. Emerson has done some studies that brought new information to the forefront and I think we need to go back to the drawing board and look at everything. I won't go into detail here, but it all comes down to two thousand thirteen stormwater guidelines in the, in the Wamba Central Park drainage study because new homes should not be more important than existing homes and families. These, this new information should be taken seriously so that all parties can come up with a solution to best serve the people already living in the area. The second comment coincides with that. It's from Lauren Daybert, five twenty East Wimbledon, same address, and she just says same comment as number one, which I just read. Number three is Rosanne Kojakura at six fifteen Yale Drive. Since the city cannot maintain the infrastructure now, why should more development be allowed? Is the planning commission monitoring the city's ability to deal with the stormwater infrastructure before it approves new subdivisions? Shouldn't the planning commission do that? Question mark. The Central Park Cluster renewal expired on November the fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Section fifty four dash eight oh nine of the code states that the expired renewal must conform to all new ordinances and regulations that are in place at the time of renewal. Planning commission has been, has been up and, and running on Zoom since two thousand, June two thousand twenty, so COVID is not a valid excuse for saying they couldn't get it on the agenda for now. The two seventeen, two thousand seventeen planning commission added the condition that stormwater easement must be more than exceed what is required. It's properly considered a specially protected area and there's certain requirements based on that, but the condition placed by the two thousand seventeen planning commission vote on as part of its, part of its approval stated that stormwater easement must exceed the requirements which would already pertain to the property. We do not feel the TRC has held the developer to this condition, especially since it is not listed correctly in the agenda, agenda package. Chloe, I think that the other ones I have, are they in the written comments? Because I think the other ones I have are all the people that have spoken, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So I think we've heard from everyone that's opposed. Mr. Leesman, I know you're still with us, so we'll give you an opportunity to, I know it's a lot of information to answer anything or any comments you'd like to make.
Mr. Chairman, Carish, I appreciate that. Now, I will be brief, but there are some misstatements that I would like to address and again to thank you all for, for being here and giving this careful, careful consideration. At the outset of this agenda item, Ms. Harp indicated that the city's planning staff does recommend approval of this request for an extension and I believe that that's the correct decision. Obviously, you've received legal advice as well on this very issue and you'll, you'll weigh this issue appropriately. One very important thing that I think everyone was, a lot of the comments were sort of operating up at the same points and, and trying to reiterate the same points, but I do want to indicate something to you. Again, the vested rights continue from year to year and can be extended up to five years. Here's what the state law says about extensions. A local governing body, in that instance, this would be the planning commission, must provide for a process by which the landowner of real property with a vested right may apply at the end of the vesting period to the local governing body for an annual extension of the vested right. So we applied, I believe it was October fourteenth, and we of course don't control the meeting dates of the planning commission and you guys, you meet as you meet. But the legal standard for all of this is that we apply at the end of the vesting period. So that could have been even after November fifteenth, but we applied before then. We applied in October and here we are in November eighteenth for that extension to be voted upon by you all. And so I wanted to correct that because there was a lot of people that were stating what the law says to you and that everyone that stated what the law says to you that I just heard outside of your executive session stated it incorrectly. And I think that's important because I wouldn't want you to be influenced by misstatements. There are some other misstatements I quickly would like to address and that is, I tell you, what have we been doing for the last two and a half years other than making sure that this project adheres to all of these requirements? I'm on a first name basis with Kenzie Holden and with Matt Fountain and with Eric Schultz. I'm also on a first name basis with Dr. Rebus and others. So to suggest that the landowner has not met with or has not conferred with the folks that have spoken tonight is untrue. Actually, and I don't know how often this happens, but we've had members of the public at every TRC meeting that I've been to, and I've been to probably six or seven of them. And the engineers have been there and to suggest that this has been anything other than an open process is, is simply this, and I'm not trying to cast dispersions at anyone, but that's just not a true statement to the planning commission. We had Seaman Whiteside involved with this project, a leading engineering firm, and some of their engineers, or at least one of their engineers, one of the ladies that wrote in a written comment tonight, she's filed a professional grievance against him. The folks have filed a lawsuit against the city to claim that the planning commission is inadequate to act. The law through, the, the individuals are threatened, individuals at DEHAC with class actions and with personal liability. So as we go through here, the landowner has done everything that's been asked of him. We do comply with the stormwater regulations and licensed engineers, at least five of them, agree with that. I'm not sure what the hydrologist from Utah would be referring to, but this process has been extremely thorough, extremely valid, and has resulted in a project that meets and exceeds all of the applicable guidelines. And so you've heard more than enough, but I wanted to mention those, a couple of items, plus the fact that the cluster development ordinance that you deferred consideration of tonight makes consideration for existing cluster developments and this is one. So application's timely, the process has been thorough and appropriate, and we just would ask again for your consideration and what we believe that law, the law does call for you to extend this vested right because we've done everything that is appropriate for a landowner to receive that extension. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Leesman. That's going to close the public aspect of this. I'll ask any commission members, if they have questions, comments or motions.
I do have one. I do have one question. I know we approved the conceptual plan last, last time, a year ago. How many times have y'all gone before TRC at this juncture?
Ms. Harrison, that question was directed.
Can you answer that? Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. There have been ten rounds of, of TRC for this project. And the most recent of those would have been, I believe, in June, July of this year and all comments have been resolved. And again, as indicated, the city has applies its, its most strict standards to the project. And as you know, Ms. Harrison, TRC is a multi-disciplinary, multi, well, multi-department review. And so what really the last several rounds of TRC have been about has been engineering and stormwater. There are minor items that have resulted in the roads, parks, ADA and other, other age, other departments, but really the process has been an extremely thorough analysis of stormwater and that's what's taken those rounds. But again, I think the short answer to your question is there have been ten rounds of TRC, including five in the last year.
Thank you, Mr. Leesman. Ms. Harrison, other comments, questions?
No, I have no more.
If not?
No, I have no more.
All right, other commission members? Any other commission members like to speak on this?
Charlie.
But Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
I just, a couple of comments. Listening to the folks who took the time out of their night to speak or submit comments about this application, I think they were all in opposition. I share many of the concerns that those folks raised regarding flooding and development and so forth all over the city of Charleston. But in this instance, I think that the applicant has met their obligation that gives them the right to this extension. And I'm actually encouraged that it's taken them so long. I'm encouraged that, that this TRC process has been so extensive and that it has not been a rubber stamp. It has not been easy. I think that is what has frustrated so many citizens around Charleston is that they feel like overdevelopment is just the result of a rubber stamp planning process. And I think this application certainly shows that that is not the case. And so I don't want to cut off any other commissioners if they are, they want to make a comment or ask a question, but I will make a motion to approve the extension.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and, and I agree with you. I think that it's good that the process makes everyone work through it and it is stringent and it is thorough and it has taken a lot of times and I think it was ten meetings and then maybe, gosh, ten more meetings to get this thing right, I hope, but, but we want to get it right. I hear you. Other comments from commission members?
I'm going to go ahead and second, second Mr. Bailey's motion. And the primary reason why I think we have to do this is, yes, there is a statute, there's an ordinance that says we have to do the vested rights act, but let's, you know, contemplate this. And I think our struggle is, is that we want to make sure the process is fair, not only for our residents and this community, but also for the people who do take the time to invest. And so if we start from the position that this project received conceptual approval in the year November two thousand seventeen and we're sitting here in November two thousand twenty, that's nearly three years, but think about all the additional time before getting to conceptual approval. But in the interim, what we also had was a stormwater, the stormwater was revised. And so it's as if we are telling folks, you spend all of this time training for the race, you're running the race, it's a, it's a marathon, you've got twenty six miles, and then in the middle of that race, you're told you've got another ten miles to go. And so when the rules change, it creates, it creates a, a, an uncertainty. You can start out from the premise of uncertainty if you never had a plan, but if you're in the middle of the planning process, you need some level of certainty and that's what really the vested rights act creates. But then in that uncertainty, you still have to continue marching through the process and marching through the rigorousness of it. And so I said it last time that this project was here, let the process work. It's been vetted, you've, you, five additional meetings in the past year tells us that our folks really diligently work, look at these projects, but more so is the fact that it isn't just city staff, it isn't just us as planning commissioners, it's your city council persons, it's, you have all participated at some level of the process to make this plan to, for them to be here today. And so for them to ask for an extension says more to me that the process is working because our city staff, us as commissioners are going the extra mile to make sure that the process is working and that the concerns of the neighboring communities are addressed and that the rigorousness of our stormwater, even as applied from the two thousand thirteen regs, is applied stringlessly and stringently to this, to this, to this development. And so that's why I think it's important to second it because I think they are, it's not just about the developers, it's about the community and the process working and that is, and we have worked this process. And still they're not fully approved, so that's where we are. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson has a heat phrase.
And I just wanted to say that I echo everything that Ms. Harrison said. She said it beautifully and I think she captured what, what I'm feeling, so I just wanted to go on record with that.
Mr. Chairman, and I also agree with both Ms. Harrison and Mr. Bailey. I particularly appreciate the comments of the, of the folks who took the time to write in and, and took the time to speak tonight on this issue. It's important. All of us on this commission also live in, in the community. We all live in Charleston and we're all also concerned about, about stormwater and flooding. And the narrow question in front of us tonight is about an extension of the vested rights act. That doesn't mean we don't care about stormwater, that's just not what this planning commission's purview is. And a number of the other concerns, you know, are, are the remedy for those concerns are in front of other bodies. And so, but again, I appreciate the concerns of, of all those who spoke, particularly the neighbors. And, and, and as Ms. Harrison said, that the, the process is working here and, and, and we have to trust that and I, and I, but I do believe that, that the law requires us to give this extension tonight and, and I believe my duty is to, is to follow the law. So that's what will guide my vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lusane. Other comments, questions, commission members? If, if not, I agree with everyone that's spoken from the commission. If not, we'll go ahead and, it was a motion by, made by Mr. Bailey and second by Ms. Harrison to approve this. I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Bailey.
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Jacobs?
I will be abstaining from the vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great, Mr. Lusane?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great, and I'm in favor as well, so that's five in favor and one of extension, so this motion will pass. Thank you all and thank you for everyone's comments. The next item on the agenda is zonings, number one, three sixty three Linwood Oak, Oakland, West Ashley, TMS number three one oh one, two six zero 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 six one point two acres request zoning of single family residential SR one zone, family residential at R four in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is a recent annexation in West Ashley, in the Oakland area. It was owned R four in Charleston County and we typically bring those in as SR one and that is a recommendation.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to be heard, Chloe? Any comments on this?
No.
No.
Okay, great, thank you. So that would close the public aspect of this. Is there a motion for commission members? I'm sorry?
I'm in for approval.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Lusane lose approval, second by Ms. Jacobs, any other comments? If not, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Lusane?
Aye in favor.
Great, and I'm in favor, so that's six in favor and none opposed. The last item on the agenda is number two on the zonings, a portion of St. Philip Street Peninsula currently unzoned right of way, request previously unzoned right of way to be included with the Shepherd Street PUD. Mr. Morgan?
And you all might remember earlier this year, you saw this Shepherd Street PUD come before you and the assumption always was at that point in time that there would be a closure of the St. Philip right of way there that really goes nowhere, it dead ends at the cross town and. And that in fact has been hap, has happened and the right-of-way has been dedicated to the property owners on either side, which are the folks who, that own that PUD. And so now it stands before you to get that property zoned and this would make it part of the PUD that has already been before you. It doesn't add any units or anything like that, it just gives them extra room to create their parking areas and create a better layout for their PUD.
Oh, yes, any comments on this, public or written?
No.
No.
Okay, so that'll close the public aspect. Motions by commission members or comments?
I, I move to approve the reasoning.
Ms. Harrison moves to approve, is there a second?
This is Mr. Lusane, I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Harrison, second by Ms. Lusane. I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great, Mr. Lusane?
Aye in favor.
Aye in favor.
Great, and I'm in favor as well, so that's in six in favor, none against. And that concludes our agenda for tonight. I appreciate everyone's time. It was a little long meeting, but I appreciate everyone's energy and I hope everyone has a very healthy and happy Thanksgiving and a safe one as well.
Same to you.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Night, everyone.
Good night.